October, we had a lot happen. Our stock prices hit all time highs. We've got a new following. We have a whole bunch of institutional investors and we've announced a big contract. We're really, really excited. And we're going to get into the details of the business later on, but I wanted to share just two quick anecdotes. At our last meeting, I announced that we finally had an institutional investor, Covista Capital had invested. And shortly after that meeting, I flew it to Vancouver to meet Rand Cannon and Spencer McCasham. And they were terrific new friends to the company and have become fantastic supporters. They made a few introductions. I met terrific guys at Lee Jones Gable, Chris Wordle, been a terrific supporter. They introduced me to Small Cap Discoveries Group and a whole bunch of other people. Anyway, one of the new shareholders that we got, his name is Russell Maldon. Russell called me in the first week in January. I'd only known him a couple of months. And he said to me, James, you're an overnight success. The stock's up. Things are great. And that made me laugh because the reality is we've been working hard at this for years and years. Andrew Incorporated Char seven or eight years ago, Clean Tech Capital, which merged with Char was incorporated six years ago. The business that we bought from Alex Keane, Alex still involved and terrific supporter of the company. He started the business 35 years ago that we're still running. So Russell, I'm sorry, but I can't agree. It has, it is not an overnight success. It's lots of hard work that's finally paying off. The second anecdote I want to share is another shareholder and dear friend, Steve Zaman. He called me, we hit, I think, a third or fourth all time high in a month. This is back in February and he called me and he said, I look at my screen in the morning, James, and I see yes. And he said, it reminds me, and it's yes, yes, yes. He said, it reminds me of when Harry Met Sally and Meg Ryan in the diner saying, yes, yes, yes. And we hope there's going to be lots more Meg Ryan to come. Steve's right. Our symbol does represent big excitement and big enthusiasm. And so with that in mind, we go into this annual meeting, hoping for the continued success. We know there's a lot of hard work in front of us, whether it's five years, eight years, or 20 years of hard work. We're willing to do it because we think we're going to have continued success with Char. Andrew, if you could advance a slide. So here's the agenda. We've got the welcoming introductions, the formal business, which we'll get through as quickly as possible. New director introductions and Andrew will do a management presentation. We'll have Q and A. And then we have our keynote speaker, Michael Haynesworth. If you could advance a slide. And I think I've done this and if we could go one more. So the forward looking statements, most companies speed through this slide. I like to spend at least a minute on it. I'm, my family between myself, my wife, my brother, my mother, and all three of my sisters, my nieces and nephews. We represent the biggest shareholder in this company. Our group and Andrew together represent well over 10 million shares. We will be the biggest winners and so far we are the biggest winners. And if we fail, which I doubt will happen, we will be the biggest losers. But it's important to tell you there's risk in anything. And the forward looking statement says, join us. There is risk, but we believe that there's lots of reward. And we hope you want to stay shareholders. If you can't afford to lose money, invest in something else. There is risk, but we believe there's lots of upside and we've put our money where our mouth is as the biggest investors. If you could advance a slide, Andrew. So the formal business, I'm going to call on Bill White. It is not the greatest job. Bill always does a great job. He'll go through it as quickly as possible. For those of you that have emails to look at or whatever, it'll take 10 to 12 minutes probably. And I will pass the torch to Bill to take us through the formal business.
Thank you, James. With that glowing introduction, I hope I can keep your attention as we go through the formal business. So good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill White, Chairman of the Corporation. I'd like to welcome you to the 2021 Annual and Special Meeting of Shareholders of Char Technologies Limited. And I'll act as Chairman of the meeting. As stated in the Management Information Circular, in order to proactively deal with the unprecedented public health impact of COVID-19 and in compliance with the provincial and federal guidance regarding the public gatherings, shareholders have been encouraged not to attend this meeting in person, but to vote by proxy in advance of the meeting and to join via the Zoom video conference line to attend the meeting virtually. As noted in the circular, you will not be able to vote or change any of your previous proxy vote over the video conference line. On behalf of the corporation, I thank you for your forbearance and cooperation during these trying times. The meeting will now come to order and with your approval, I shall ask Andrew Todd to act as Secretary of the Meeting and Oliver Currie to TSX Trust Company to act as scrutiny. I now instruct the secretary to table to the meeting the following documents. Notice of meaning, instrument of proxy, management information circular, and audited financial statements and the management's discussion and analysis of the corporation for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2020. I also confirm that the above material is sent to each director and the corporation's auditors. These documents are tabled in order that any shareholder may examine those same if so desired. In view of the fact that the notice of meaning and the statutory declaration proving service in accordance with the relevant, relevant bylaws of the corporation, I have tabled and are available for inspection. I will now entertain a motion that the reading of the notice of meaning and the statutory declaration proving service thereof be dispensed with.
I move that the reading of the notice of the meeting and the statutory declaration proving service thereof be dispensed with.
I second the motion.
It's now been moved and seconded that the reading of the notice of meaning and the statutory declaration proving service thereof be dispensed with. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Any contrary? Motion was carried unanimously. Quarrel. Would the scrutiny please report the number of shareholders present in person and the total number of shares represent together with the number of shares represented by proxy?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. There are three holders represented in person by proxy at the meeting representing 1,281,971 shares. There were a total of 76 management proxies received, representing 24,635,123 shares. This represents a total number of shares of 25,917,094 shares represented at the meeting, which equates to 36.73% of the issued and outstanding.
There is a quarrel present and proof of notice calling this meeting has been given in accordance with the corporation's bylaws and the Business Corporations Act of Ontario. I now declare the meeting is regularly called and properly constituted for the transaction of business and instruct the secretary to make a declaration of mailing and attached exhibit as Schedule A to the minutes of this meeting. I now present to the meeting the consolidated statements of financial position and related financial statements of the corporation as at September 30th, 2020. Together with the report thereon of the auditors of the corporation to the shareholders, copies of such documents have been mailed to all shareholders and it is not proposed to read them to the meeting unless anyone objects. I will now ask that someone move and someone second a resolution that the auditor's report be taken as read.
I move that the auditors report on the financial statements of the corporation for the fiscal year ended September 30th to 2020 be taken as read.
I second the motion.
All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Any contrary? The resolution has been carried unanimously. It's now in order to proceed with the election of directors for the ensuing year. Accordingly, seven directors are to be elected. I declare the meeting open for nominations.
Muted.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I nominate the following directors, or sorry, I nominate the following persons as directors of the corporation for the ensuing year. You, William White, Eric Butel, myself, James Scola, Benjamin Gallander, Jane Pagel, Nick Nanos, and Paul Pellegrini.
The nominees named are nominees of management as disclosed in the circular. Are there any further nominations? Would someone move that nominations be closed?
I move that nominations be closed.
I second the motion.
All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Any contrary? Motion's carried unanimously. I hereby declare the nominations closed. Would someone move therefore a resolution for election of those persons nominated as directors?
I move that William White, Eric Butel, James Scola, Benjamin Gallander, Jane Pagel, Nick Nanos, and Paul Pellegrini be and are hereby elected as directors of the corporation to hold office until next annual meeting or until their successors are elected or appointed.
I second the motion.
All those in favor of the motion signify by raising their hand. Any contrary? The motions carried unanimously. I hereby declare that those persons duly elected as the directors of the corporation. The next item of business is a resolution appointing auditors for the ensuing year and authorizing the directors to fix their remuneration. As noted in the circular, DMCL LLP were first appointed as auditors for the corporation on December 12th, 2018. Would someone move therefore the reappointment of DMCL LLP as the auditors of the corporation and to authorize the directors to fix their remuneration?
I move that DMCL LLP chartered accountants be appointed as auditors of the corporation for the ensuing year to serve as such remuneration as may be fixed by the Board of Directors.
I second the motion.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those to the contrary? Seeing no contraries, the motion is carried unanimously. I declare that DMCL LLP chartered accountants are appointed as the auditors of the corporation for the ensuing year or until their successors are appointed to serve as such remuneration as may be fixed by the Board of Directors. The next item of business is to consider and if deemed advisable to pass with or without variation, an ordinary resolution to approve for the ensuing year the corporation's new omnibus long-term incentive plan, which replaces the pre-existing stock option plan and provides a means to grant options, restricted shares, restricted share units, deferred shares, share appreciation rights awards to directors, officers, senior executives, and other employees of the corporation or subsidiary consultants and service providers providing ongoing services to the corporation and its affiliates, all as set out on page 23 to 29 and Schedule A of the circular. Are there any questions from shareholders relating to this resolution? In order for this resolution to be effective, it must be passed by a majority of votes cast at this meeting, excluding the votes of insiders and their associates as described in the circular. If there are no questions, I would request a motion to approve the omnibus long-term incentive plan.
Be it resolved as an ordinary resolution that the omnibus long-term incentive plan of Char Technologies Limited, the corporation substantially in the form as attached as Schedule A to the management information circular of the corporation dated February 26th, 2021, the omnibus plan with such other conforming changes as the Board of Directors, the corporation considers necessary or appropriate is hereby ratified, confirmed, and approved. That's A. B, the reservation for issuance from treasury pursuant to options under the omnibus plan and under any other security-based compensation arrangement adopted by the corporation of up to 10% of the issued and outstanding common shares of the corporation from time to time is hereby ratified, confirmed, and approved. C, the reservation of this for issuance from treasury under the omnibus plan pursuant to share appreciation rights, restricted shares, restricted share units, and deferred share units of 3,530,442 common shares is hereby ratified, confirmed, and approved. D, the form of the omnibus plan may be amended in order to satisfy their requirements or requests of any regulatory authority or stock exchange without requiring further approval of the shareholders. E, the shareholders of the corporation hereby expressly authorize the Board of Directors of the corporation in its discretion to revoke this resolution before it is acted upon without requiring further approval of the shareholders in that regard. And F, anyone or more director or officer of the corporation is authorized and directed on behalf of the corporation to take all necessary steps and proceedings to execute, deliver, and file any and all declarations, agreements, documents, and other instruments, and do all such other acts and things, whether under corporate seal of the corporation or otherwise, that may be necessary or desirable or give effect to this ordinary resolution.
I second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Any contrary? Motion is carried unanimously. I hereby declare that the ordinary resolution to approve the corporation's new omnibus long-term incentive plan has been passed by a majority of the votes cast by the disinterested shareholders at this meeting. Unless there's any further business to come before the meeting, I would entertain a motion to terminate this meeting.
I move that this meeting be terminated.
I second the motion.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Any to the contrary? Seeing none, the motion is carried unanimously. I thank you for your attendance and I hereby declare this meeting terminated.
Bill, thanks very much for doing that. It's not an easy job. You always do a great job. And thanks to Benj and Eric for making the nominations and for the scrutiny's report. Thank you, Oliver. So next we have our new director introductions. We're going to have each of them speak for a couple of minutes just to introduce themselves. So without further ado, I'd ask Jane Pagel to turn her camera on and address the group for a couple of minutes.
Thanks very much, James. I've been asked to give a very brief introduction, so I'm not going to do a chronology. That'd be much too long and boring. My entire career has been spent in some aspect of the environment industry, early years with the Ministry of Environment, so provincial. And I finished there as Director of Research and Technology, had a nice little budget for technology development, actually, back in the 80s. I spent part of the 90s as President of Xenon Environmental Labs until they were sold to Philip Services. And from there I went into a couple of engineering companies, Jake Switford and Stan Tech. In terms of highlights, spent 10 years on the Prime Minister's Council on Science, Technology and met some incredible people. And about 12 or 13 years on the board of Sustainable Development Technology Canada, another wonderful experience. I tried to retire unsuccessfully a couple of times. I was President and CEO of the Ontario Clean Water Agency. So we operated about 800 water wastewater treatment plants. And then I got talked into a buddy years stint as interim director, interim CEO rather at SDTC. So I'm really excited. I'm honored actually to be joining this board and helping this company any way I can. I was an early investor in Clean Tech Capital. And I've watched Char since and benefited in terms of the stock I owned. And I must say it's an innovating, exciting company. It's part of the future we need and really does push the boundaries of technologies that I'm excited about. That's it.
Thanks so much, Jane. And if you don't mind me adding, Jane and I have been friends for about 20 years and it's terrific that we'll have an opportunity to work together closely. We've, we've worked together in the, in the outside environment with different companies liaising, but this will be the first time we're on a board together. So I'm delighted to have you as a, as a partner in the day-to-day, day-to-day business.
Thank you.
Next we have Nick Nanos. I've known Jane 20 years. I've Nick, known Nick since 1987. Those who were shareholders a couple of years ago might remember Nick was our keynote speaker. The last time we had a real life AGM, which hopefully next, next year, hopefully we'll be able to do that again. But anyway, Nick, the floor is yours.
Thanks a lot, Jim. I'm like Jane, I'm quite excited to join the, the board at Char. I really believe that the, the firm is at a moment in time with the right technology solution in the right place. I think these are, these are very exciting times for Char and also exciting times for, for the whole clean tech sector. As some of you might know, I'm the chief data scientist and as a founder of Nanos Research, I've founded the firm, run the firm for now 30 years. And some of you might or might not know that a big part of our practice is actually doing research, providing advice and counsel to, to energy companies and environmental organizations. And that, that's why, you know, the opportunity to, to serve on the board is a really exciting opportunity where I can bring a lot of that knowledge to the table. But the other thing that you might not know is that on the environment and energy front, I head up an advisory board at the University of Ottawa that's basically on this whole issue of how we get our, how we reconcile our environmental aspirations with smart energy. And also I'm affiliated with the Wilson Center in Washington DC on, on Canada-US energy and environmental issues. So that, that allows me to bring a little bit of a bigger picture, not just a domestic view, but also an international and North American view for sure on all of that. Just finishing up my term as the Chair of Carleton University and had a really good, had a really great experience there. And I'm, I'm quite looking forward to, to serving on the board of Char. And it, I know Char has a great team. I've been an investor for, for a number of years. So I've been, I've been following the stock and the activities, Andrew's activities, leading kind of on this, on the CEO front over the last number of years. And I'm very, very happy to be part of the team now. That's it.
Thanks, Nick. There is one added data point, if you don't mind me saying. Nick and I met in 87. I was a rookie debater and Nick was one of the veterans. We called them dinosaurs back in that day. So now I can say with confidence, if there's a corporate debating tournament, I got a partner. I got a guy who I can be Minister of the Crown or the Prime Minister and, and we'd have a good shot of winning a debating competition if there ever was one. So thanks, Nick. Last but certainly not least, we have Paul Pellegrini, again, an old and dear friend of mine and someone who's been a shareholder for a long time. Paul, the floor is yours.
Thank you, James. I'm very excited to be joining the board. Background, I guess it's been 35 years out there in the business world, but actually the first 10 were working in governments at both the federal and provincial level, working for senior ministers in various cabinet portfolios. That experience led me in 1998 to form Sussex Strategy Group. And for the last 23 years, we've been helping private sector groups navigate the federal, provincial, and municipal governments. We built up a large communications practice and a digital practice. So we've helped these firms navigate government and public policy at all levels. And during the time, we built up a very significant environmental and energy practice. And that's put me in touch with a lot of the world that Char will intersect. So I'm really excited about bringing that expertise to the board. Obviously I follow public policy in this area in the US and Canada. And one of the exciting reasons I wanted to join the board is the stars are clearly aligning with legislation and the Biden administration getting elected. I think the future is very, very strong for Char and I want to help, help it grow as an existing and hopefully future shareholder as well. But a lot of experience on boards, mostly charitable, but did serve on one public board called Lombardi Media. And when, before I started Sussex, I worked for a couple of years for a healthcare company, took it public. Companies called Dyna Care, then the lab business. I was their investor relations person in those early years. And that really gave me an appreciation of what the responsibilities are for officers and directors and reporting. And I'm very familiar with the public markets and I think I can add value as a board member. And I'm transitioning Sussex now to the new leadership over the next few years. This has given me more time to devote to this board. And I'm really excited to be joining this team. This management team's done a great job and the board members that I'm being elected with and the ones that have served before, I think have all set us up for incredible growth. I look forward to serving you.
Thanks, Paul. Fantastic. We're, we're very happy to have you. We feel fortunate and we know that you're going to make great contributions to the board. Andrew, if we could advance a slide. So now we're on to the management presentation. So we'll give the floor to Andrew White and he'll walk you through. And if there are questions, I'll say this in advance. You can put them, you can send them directly to me or to Andrew as a private message, or you can send them in the chat to the public chat. So Andrew, the floor is yours and we look forward to the presentation.
Awesome. Thanks, James. And thanks everyone again for attending. Hopefully our second but last virtual AGM as we like having these in person. It's a lot more interesting and exciting to see everyone in the audience, but you know, we're, we're doing the best we can with the Zoom platform here. So I'm going to take everyone through a real quick overview of the business again to make sure everyone knows kind of where we're, where we're going, what we're doing. And then a little bit more on, on the future state, where we're going this year and really some of the things that we're most excited about. So the primary thing from our, our mission and vision to point out is that primarily we are in the industrial space. So we're an industrial, clean air, clean water, soils and waste. And our primary focus is moving towards that circular economy. That's so important for moving our society forward. So a quick overview for those who, who may be new to the story. We do have two operating groups. The first is Altech. It's our environmental engineering services and compliance practice. Not only does it provide a great baseline revenue, it has a lot of very talented process engineers who can assist on the technology side and can also assist on getting our technologies through the permitting process, which is very important. Primarily I'm going to focus on Chartech Solutions. That's where our advanced industrial clean tech comes from. And within that group, we have a focus on industrial clean water as well as waste reduction and renewable energy through high temperature paralysis, which we'll get into much more detail. A quick financial overview from our last year. Obviously, you know, COVID was an interesting time for many organizations. We made the decision to bring our EBITDA to basically neutral. While we kind of weathered the storm in the early days with all of the uncertainty. I think the most pressing or most interesting item is our private placement. We closed on February 5th for 6 million. So now we're out of the cost containment, you know, EBITDA neutral realm and we're investing in people and technology and really being able to capitalize on this growth opportunity we have in front of us. So as a quick summary on the corporate side, we continue to find efficiencies. As I mentioned, we balanced the EBITDA for, for COVID to make sure we were getting through that uncertain time unscathed. And finally, capital markets are starting to pay attention to the story. I think it's just the beginning of our push into telling the story and getting a lot more people to understand the really cool and exciting things we're up to. And that obviously culminated most recently with our, our $6 million private placement. The cult, the consulting group, Altech, saw continued revenue growth and had some opportunities to pivot into new service offerings with the changing landscape. And finally, on the technology side, we did recently announce a large order for Clean Fire, which is our bio coal. It was a thousand ton order. As we'll get into later in the slide, our, our high temperature paralysis produces two products. One is a gas, which we know the market exists for. This really validated the market for our other co-product, the Clean Fire. And of course, we are now active in renewable natural gas and green hydrogen project development opportunities. So a quick summary of what paralysis is. This is a fairly simplified graphic, but we take challenging materials like digestate. It's kind of a compost left over from a biogas plant, biosolid, the leftover from a wastewater treatment plant, things like manure and compost, as well as wood, wood waste, wood residuals, agricultural residuals. And we put it in our high temperature paralysis unit. Basically what that involves is heating the material up to between 500 and 850 degrees Celsius in a zero oxygen environment. So without any oxygen, nothing can burn. But it can be converted thermally into two co-products. The first is clean energy and the form of a syn gas that we can further refine into green hydrogen or renewable natural gas. The other is biocarbon and that's where our Clean Fire, the, the bio coal order that we just announced came from. This is our, a picture of our existing facility in London. This is where we'll be fulfilling that Clean Fire order. The most important thing to, to mention on this slide is not only is the technology carbon negative, so it reduces greenhouse gas emissions by processing this feedstock. It also produces energy. And the key piece here is that that gas energy we produce runs the plant. So we don't actually need any external heat sources once the system's running to get us those high temperatures of 500 or 850 degrees Celsius. It does it itself and then produces excess gas that we can utilize. And so to talk a little bit about some of the market catalysts for our outputs. On the clean energy side, the first is renewable green hydrogen. And I think the most interesting factor of the green hydrogen space is that, that's something we've And I think the most interesting factor of the green hydrogen space is that, that's something we've always done. It's always present in our gas stream. Uh, we've made some tweaks to the process to optimize hydrogen production, but there's not a lot of technology development that's required because it's core to how our technology operates. We can use all sorts of, uh, waste materials as our feedstock. Uh, it doesn't just have to be wood. We can use anaerobic digestate. So again, the leftovers from those first generation biogas plants as well as biosolids. Uh, we're well poised because of our inherent technology capabilities to really be a leader in the distributed, uh, green hydrogen economy as it evolves, particularly in California. And to give an idea of kind of scale of these plants, uh, the first proposed facility in California that we're working on uh, would generate about a hundred kilograms. That says per day, it's actually a hundred kilograms per hour. Uh, so it can produce a relatively, uh, high amount of, of hydrogen uh, to kind of let you do the, the back of the envelope math, a hundred kilograms per hour of hydrogen and the California market is between five and ten dollars per kilogram of hydrogen. So it's a very exciting space to be. And of course, this graphic that I lifted from the Ontario Hydrogen Strategy, biomass to green hydrogen is a well, uh, established or it's a, a well-understood and validated, uh, pathway for green hydrogen. The second clean energy option is renewable natural gas. Uh, many people may know about anaerobic digestion, which is biogas. It's kind of a first generation technology. Uh, Pyrolysis is a second generation technology. So we take organic wastes from those first generation plants. We take woody biomass, wood waste. And that's what we can convert into our renewable natural gas. Um, a recent study by, uh, that was commissioned by Energy Year showed that to meet their targets by twenty thirty, over eighty percent of the RNG in that province would have to come from woody biomass. Anaerobic digesters can't turn woody material into renewable natural gas. They, they just can't. And so with that kind of market demand, Pyrolysis is very well poised to lead in RNG production in the coming years if we're going to really make an impact on the amount of renewable natural gas in the pipeline. And finally, is our, our bio coal. Uh, to give you a sense of the, the size of the industry, you know, we just received a thousand ton order. Uh, the Ontario steel industry alone consumes one point seven million tons of fossil coal that we can look at offsetting. So the market potential is very substantial and the interest is in this, this fairly basic uh, math that I'm showing on the slide here. In that one ton of fossil coal burned produces three tons of greenhouse gas emissions. And so at a carbon price or a, a carbon tax of fifty dollars per ton, that adds a hundred and fifty dollars for each ton of fossil coal burned for the user. By twenty thirty, the, the greenhouse gas pricing is supposed to be a hundred and seventy dollars a ton, uh, which adds an additional five hundred and ten dollars, uh, for each ton of fossil coal burn. So this is really driving the interest because this is a substantial, uh, carbon price that, uh, large industrial users will be paying. And often they can't do anything else. When we talk about the steel industry, a blast furnace requires solid carbon in that blast furnace. So it can either be fossil coal or bio coal, and that's kind of it. So that's a really, really good opportunity and we are validating that market. And because of these, uh, greenhouse gas prices, uh, we can be very competitive with fossil coal at a price uh, between two hundred and fifty and three hundred dollars per ton. Well, I mentioned March seventeenth, uh, we were able to announce that large one thousand ton order with a, a great, uh, uh, forward-looking steel company and that will be put directly in the blast furnaces and really validate its use. And so on, when we talk about what are the next steps, uh, this is a graphical representation of a larger facility and our desire would be to build a facility that can produce two co-products about a million gigajoules per year of renewable natural gas and twenty five thousand tons per year of clean fire, uh, to start to meet that demand. Uh, we're going to approach it in a phased approach. We do have a modular, uh, system. So this is a module here, uh, on the, the slide. And so we can put these modules in, we can go about it incrementally. So we don't need massive, massive capital to build these large, uh, production, uh, capable systems. I'm sure this is probably old news because it's from over a year ago now, uh, but Blackrock is not the only, uh, firm or, or industry that's moving away from fossil coal. So it is important just to highlight that uh, there is a strong push, especially in the last year towards ESG. And that's again, why we're very well positioned at this time, uh, to pursue renewable natural gas, green hydrogen and bio coal. And then I'll touch very quickly on our secondary market, which is the processing of biosolids. I've got a fair bit of information on the screen here, but the one that's most important is folded. Uh, and that is that landfill costs to dispose of biosolids are set to increase substantially because of this contamination called PFAS. Now PFAS is making a lot more news in the United States than in Canada at the moment. Uh, it's a ingredient in anything that's really non-stick or, or water resistant. So uh, Gore-Tex, Teflon, Scotchgard, all these components have PFAS in it. It is a priority contaminant. It is very challenging to get rid of and we have proven over the last twelve months that our Pyrolysis technology can destroy PFAS in the biosolids. And so this is an emerging secondary market that we're very excited about. So to kind of bring it all together, what's the overall business model? Well, CHAR and Chartech Solutions is really an EPCM firm providing turnkey Pyrolysis plants. Uh, we're producing renewable gases, be the, be they renewable natural gas or green hydrogen as well as biocarbons. If we're selling our plants to these biosolid opportunities, we have recurring service model with, uh, monitoring, uh, as well as a recurring fee to manage their, their biocarbon. So we will place it in the right market opportunity, find the best home for it and have a, a fee for doing so. And when we're talking strictly about, uh, producing bio coal RNG or hydrogen, we are pursuing a utility model where we will be either complete owners or partial owners with, uh, JV partners who have a strong uh, track record of operational capabilities, uh, to get these projects up and running, uh, quickly and efficiently. Quickly on the capital markets, just to give a sense, the data here is from, uh, yesterday, but to give a sense, insiders still have a, a pretty substantial stake in the business and, and, uh, we certainly continue to, uh, have that. Uh, as James mentioned, right at the beginning, we have now attracted some institutional investors and the public float is about sixty six percent. So there's a, a good, uh, mix, but we are as insiders, well-invested in the success of the business. And the final point is that, uh, as I mentioned right at the outset, the capital markets are starting to hear our story. They're starting to see the opportunity. Uh, certainly that was punctuated by our, our six million dollar raise, uh, but the, uh, stock itself has certainly seen uh, a fair bit more volume, um, since really November and has certainly seen the appreciation and, and stock prices. People recognize this story, recognize this opportunity and see where we're taking the business. So with that, uh, I think we have some time for a little bit of Q and A that will be moderated by James before we get on to our keynote.
Thanks, Andrew. And so we do have a few, we have three questions already in the chat. If you have questions, you can send them to me. Uh, the first question is about, uh, what's about the, the Clean Fire? The question is to produce a hundred kilograms per hour, what would be the incoming tons per day required?
So that's probably mixing two, two different things I said and, and I'll, I'll try and clarify. So the hundred kilograms per hour is a, uh, hydrogen number. So that's the green hydrogen opportunity we're working on. Uh, to produce that much, uh, hydrogen, a hundred kilograms per hour, that facility will be, uh, processing about eighteen thousand tons per year of anaerobic digestate, the, uh, leftovers or residuals, uh, from a biogas facility. On a clean fire perspective, uh, the yield is about, uh, twenty percent or so. So if you want to make twenty thousand tons of clean fire, you need a hundred thousand tons of incoming material. Uh, but keep in mind, the rest isn't wasted. So that, that rest, that kind of eighty percent, uh, the majority of that is converted into our syn gas that, uh, we can then upgrade to green hydrogen or renewable natural gas. So that's roughly how the numbers work.
Um, the next question sort of, uh, tells, tells on that, would CHAR sells Clean Fire, does CHAR or the customer own the carbon credits created? If any?
Yeah, and that's a, that's a great question. Um, primarily the way that the carbon credits work in biocarbon, there's kind of two, two different buckets. On the use of Clean Fire where you're burning it, really it's the, the customer that, you know, owns the credits and they're getting credits by offsetting fossil coal. So they're offsetting the emissions, uh, fossil coal, that fossil coal stays in the ground, that carbon stays sequestered. They use Clean Fire instead and, and they see that offset. So they see that reduction in, uh, you know, the, the greenhouse gas pricing, you know, depending on the jurisdiction they're in, it's either a tax or a cap and trader or the like. The other alternative for biocarbon is it can be used as a soil amendment, a fertilizer, uh, activated carbon like our sulphur char. Um, any number of kind of advanced material options. And in those cases, uh, we would own the credits because it's now being used as a sequestration of carbon directly. Uh, and that kind of works, you know, the CO2 from the atmosphere grows a tree. Uh, tree gets used for shipping pallets. We take those shipping pallets, process it into a fixed carbon that locks the carbon into a solid form. So it can't, uh, go back into the atmosphere.
Okay. So the next question I, I will answer, but Eric Butel, I hope you're listening. You're my, uh, sort of, not my broker, but if you could just check and then in a couple of minutes, we'll give the answer on the, what's the stock trading at today and what's the volume today? So if you could just either send me or turn your mic on and tell us the volume and the price today. And the question, the person asks, can you talk a little bit about how the stock's been trading? Uh, we've been delighted, not just with stock price, but we're also happy that we've increased our volume. And so we're now trading roughly, you know, in the last week, it was about two hundred thousand shares a day. We traded almost two hundred yesterday. Um, and we've had days where millions of shares traded. We have actively been started or commenced an investor relations program. We've added some talent and bandwidth with respect to that. And we're anticipating an increase in volume and an increase in share price, although you never know what's going to happen. I'll come back, uh, with the numbers, uh, once Eric gives me those later.
I can give it to you right now, if you like. Eighty thousand shares have traded today between seventy two and seventy three cents.
Thanks, Eric. Um, so given that it's, uh, ten forty-three, that's, that's in line with the recent volume that we've had. Um, the, the next question, Andrew, is really for you. I, I, I don't think I could answer it. The potential market for bio coal to replace fossil coal seems to be huge. Can you please address the competitive landscape? Who else can meet the demand for bio coal? And can you compare the advantages and disadvantages with CHAR? Uh, by the way, we've got a couple of more questions. So I think we're going to fill the time with the questions we've got. So you can stop sending questions. Go ahead, Andrew.
So there, there's, there's a couple ways to, to answer the question. That is when we talk about the bio coal industry, much like fossil coal, there's different grades. So, you know, a, a power plant, uh, consuming bio coal can accept a much lower grade. Uh, steel mills, uh, have the highest grade requirements because of a, a contamination issue. So we can meet that metallurgical, uh, bio coal requirement, uh, at, again, at a thousand tons, uh, order. The market really is pretty wide open. There are some companies, there's a, there's a firm in, uh, in Quebec that makes, uh, bio coal. It's a slightly lower grade. Um, and so it's a little bit more situated for combustion and, and power generation or heat uh, versus the steel industry. Uh, there's a, a firm in, uh, British Columbia that has roughly the same production capacity as ourselves. And one real competitor in, in, uh, Michigan's Upper Peninsula. Again, they, their production capacity is about the same as ours. So when you look at kind of the, the production capacities versus the market size, it's pretty wide open. Um, of those, you know, the, the other two can produce, um, the quantities of bio coal that we can, uh, they can produce the quality. But I would say the biggest differentiator is actually the co-product model in that both of those systems from what I can pull together from, uh, Market Intelligence are that they don't have the capacity to also produce green hydrogen or also produce renewable natural gas. And for us, that's a massive competitive advantage. Uh, you know, the renewable natural gas piece is something that we can get long-term utility off-takes for, which will really help with the project financing of building the capacity uh, to produce enough bio coal to also meet the demand. So it's much more about our technology and our capabilities of producing this co-product, uh, energy gas, uh, versus the quality of the, uh, the biocarbon. We're at the top of quality. There's a couple that, that are, you know, right up there with us, but we have this huge, uh, gas opportunity, uh, at the same time.
Actually, Andrew, I'll ask, is there anyone that's got an order anywhere near a thousand tons? Is there any, I, I know that there's a competitor with some and they've done some volume, but, uh, are we, aren't we miles ahead in terms of volume with that thousand ton order?
Yeah, there's, there's no, uh, major bio coal consumption, uh, at that, at this scale, at this point that we've seen.
Okay, first mover. Um, I, I'm going to try to answer this question. You tell me if I answer it correctly. Is the three to one ratio of GHD emissions per unit of fossil coal burned the same with Clean Fire? I think the question answers itself in that, that's the ratio we're talking about. The Clean Fire gets a three to one benefit in the sense that one ton of Clean Fire is worth three tons of GHD emissions because we're carbon neutral. Is that correct?
That's basically, yeah. So one ton of fossil coal gives you three tons of GHD emissions. One ton of Clean Fire can offset one ton of coal. That's one to one replacement ratio. So one ton of Clean Fire by not burning that one ton of coal, you're not generating three tons of GHD. So that's kind of how the, the whole ecosystem works.
Gotcha. Okay, the last question. Do you see a market op, and this is obviously from someone in our business. I don't think this is some from investor, uh, in New Brunswick. Uh, do you see a market opportunity, uh, for out technology in managing PFAS that may exist in sludge created from landfill leachate treatment processes? And maybe you can define PFAS for the, for those that, that won't know what that is.
Sure. So PFAS is polyfluorinated alkyl substances. Uh, like I said during the presentation, uh, they are an ingredient in Gore-Tex and Teflon and basically anything water resistant, anything non-stick, uh, because they're so stable. Um, a recent study that I saw said that about ninety nine percent of North Americans already have it in their bloodstream. So if we took uh, the blood of everyone on this call, uh, most of you would have it in there. It is kind of the, uh, contaminant, uh, priority, particularly in the United States. If you listen to anything Erin Brockovich says right now, that's what she talks about. Uh, there's a, a movie that came out about a year ago called Dark Waters. Um, that's sort of a Hollywood dramatization of it. Um, there's a Netflix documentary called The Devil We Know that talks all about it and, and some of the health implications and, and dangers of it. So there's a lot of regulation coming down, uh, especially in the United States, uh, defining PFAS limits in primarily or starting with, uh, river water and, and drinking water. That's where the, the first regulations come from. Now, the reason that we see that sort of trickle down into, into landfill tip fees is that when you dispose of a biosolid that's contaminated in a landfill, the kind of, uh, garbage juice or leachate uh, that collects at the bottom of the landfill has to be pumped out and treated. And so the, the tip fees are going up substantially for biosolids because landfills are, are you know, rightfully concerned about their leachate being contaminated with PFAS and, and the challenges with getting rid of it. So on the most obvious right up front market opportunity, it's putting a high temperature paralysis unit right beside where the biosolids are processed. Uh, pyralize it, heat it up very high temperatures and, and that destroys the PFAS. And now you're left with a bio CHAR that can go into the fertilizer markets that the biosolids were originally going to. If I understand the question correctly, there is a secondary market opportunity and that is activated carbons are used to remove PFAS from water streams. Uh, so we are doing some work on that space as well to translate our inherent IP around sulphur char, which was originally designed for hydrogen sulfide removal and apply it to PFAS removal. Uh, that's a little earlier in the, in the R and D stage, but we are actively working on that as well. So you know, there's a, a large upfront opportunity on, on, uh, processing biosolids and sort of a, a medium-term opportunity to, to start, uh, producing some of these biocarbons uh, that are specially tuned to remove PFAS from, uh, liquid streams.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. Um, excellent job answering the questions and, um, uh, if people have questions they didn't get to ask, I've answered one in the chat. if people have questions they didn't get to ask, I've answered one in the chat just now. I hope, I hope that satisfies that. And we've had other comments. Please reach out to Andrew or I or both of us after this meeting. If you have other questions you want to ask, or if you want to talk about the, the situation in any way, both on the business side, and Andrew's the best on the business side. And in terms of the stock side, if you want to buy a block of stock or you want to sell a block of stock where you, you're curious of who some of, you know, how we're operating our investor relations plan. I'm happy to address those questions in the day-to-day business. Andrew, you can obviously ask either one of us anything. We'll try to answer your questions.
Absolutely.
That brings us to the last item on the agenda. And so Michael Hainsworth, it's my honor to introduce you. Michael is, was introduced to us by Ben Ghalender, who joined our board a year ago. And we were looking for a keynote speaker and we've gotten to know Michael over the last month. And I'm delighted to give him the floor. Michael, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much, James, and, and thank you for inviting me to speak today. I'm going to take over with my screen here so I can share with you some of the things I want to talk about today specifically. Because we, we got a lot to talk about. There's been so much going on. So here we go. First of all, by the way, congratulations to Andrew White and the gang for that thousand ton bio coal order from one of the country's largest steel producers. Using clean fire bio fuel over traditional coal will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by the equivalent of taking five hundred and eighty cars off the road for a full year. That's, that's really relevant because we certainly don't have a lot of time left. Now, in my time with you today, I've been tasked with breaking it down into three categories. The state of clean tech today, how to get your story in front of the media, and what the future holds for clean tech and industry at large. So let's start with some numbers. Twenty thirty, the world has ten years, less than ten years, to cut GHD in half to avoid increasing the planet's temperature by one and a half additional degrees Celsius. Now, if we cannot stop that growth, climate scientists warn of catastrophe. To meet the demands of greenhouse gas reductions, every sector of the economy will have to evolve in just two business cycles. Now, before this date, the global economy needs to have a zero carbon footprint. This is twenty fifty. There are technologies such as Char's that are critical to enabling this transformation. They're proven technologies. Many need rapid commercialization. Some are still in the lab. Many haven't even gotten to the MVP stage just yet. But the good news is early-stage investment in climate tech is growing and fast. PWC reports that over the past seven years, total funding for climate change tech has been rising. The rate of startup creation is rising. The average size of funding continues to grow. We've seen early-stage venture funding for climate tech in twenty thirteen rise from four hundred eighteen million to more than sixteen billion in twenty nineteen. That is an increase of three thousand seven hundred percent. It's also three times the growth rate of investment into artificial intelligence. But what about twenty twenty? Investment activity into clean tech hasn't slowed despite the pandemic. Major corporations with big bucks are also opening their wallets. It can be argued that there's some greenwashing going on here, but amazon.com has pledged $2 billion for its climate pledge. Microsoft has earmarked a billion bucks for its Climate Innovation Fund. And consumer products giant Unilever, which emits a hundred million metric tons of carbon dioxide every year, has more than one billion US dollar equivalent climate fund as well. Three hundred large companies have committed to achieving net zero emissions before twenty fifty. All of these pledges represent a new demand for clean tech. A new customer in a market Char Technologies has been in since what, twenty eleven? So here's where clean tech stands today in Canada, and this is according to the government of Canada. It's presently about three point two percent of our gross domestic product. It represents about three hundred and seventeen thousand jobs in this country. And in Canada, well, we're number one in the G twenty on the clean tech global list. As a matter of fact, Canada's home to more than eight hundred and fifty clean tech companies, twelve of which are global in reach. And Canada continues to fuel the clean tech boom. In addition to private investment, Sustainable Development Technology Canada has announced funding for seed startup and scale-up companies. Scale-up firms with success in early commercialization and market leadership can apply to receive up to $10 million over five years. So there's money out there for clean tech, particularly now. Where there isn't money right now is in the media. So maybe we should talk a little bit about that as well. Particularly if you are a company that wants to get in front of the, the media. Twenty eleven represented a peak year for media revenue in Canada, topping out at three point one two billion bucks for national advertising. Four hundred thirty-three million dollars for the local ad buys, it's the little green lines along the bottom there. Twenty eleven was also the year that Netflix stopped shipping physical DVDs in the mail and pivoted to an all streaming service. Statista reports that in twenty nineteen, more than half billion in revenue was wiped away as advertisers pivoted as well. And this is where I pivoted too. Twenty eighteen, that's when I jumped ship, sinking ship, according to some. And when I left the BNN newsroom, for every person seated, sitting in a seat, there were four empty seats beside them. When people quit in media or are laid off, everyone else just picks up the slack. But what about twenty twenty? Well, according to Friends of Canadian Broadcasting, there have been two thousand ninety-six layoffs since COVID nineteen hit. Several media outlets are reporting a sixty percent decline in revenue. That led to twenty-three separate layoff announcements in twenty twenty alone. And in early twenty twenty-one, days before Bell's Let's Talk Public Relations campaign, more than two hundred Bell Media employees were laid off, including closing the newsroom of News Talk ten ten in Toronto and CJAD in Montreal. The Canadian Association for Mental Health reports losing your job is one of life's ten most traumatic experiences. But it hasn't stopped a profitable media company from issuing pink slips. That's a whole separate story. So how do we get the attention of the media when nobody there picks up the phone anymore? First, you need to find out who actually still does answer the phone, and that is generally the senior producer or the managing editor in a television newsroom. If you want to talk to them on the phone, if possible, that's really the best way to go. But any method with the least amount of friction for them works best. You know, maybe a phone call first, then an email later. Because that senior producer would have previously had three or four segment producers. They would have been assigned to each show on a television news network. Today, that's been reduced to one and likely someone working across multiple shows. So an alternative way, reach out to the hosts directly. This works for television as well as radio. Hosts, talk show hosts, news hosts, cable news hosts, they often generate their own interview segment ideas. And in many cases, do their own research, again, mostly because the support staff that previously would have provided research materials. Well, they don't work there anymore. You know, the last time I interviewed Andrew White, it was very different from the first time I interviewed him. The first time I interviewed him, I had a, a research report from a segment producer this thick. The last time I interviewed him, they came up to me and they said, you're going to talk to Andrew White. What do you need? Which is code for please don't make me do any research work for you because I've got eighteen other research reports to file as well. And so I would lean on my own knowledge, do my own research. These people are simply too busy doing five other jobs to focus on just you. But the thing is, is once you've made contact, it's actually kind of important to do their job for them as well. And I'll tell you what that means and what that does not mean. First of all, it does not mean telling them what the story is. Never tell a media person, here's the story for you. There's an ego component to this. And we've spent our entire careers telling interesting stories. You know, we decide what the story is, you know? So the question is, is how do you do their job for them once you've sort of eased your way into that? Well, first, you present the story as a, a statement of fact. Let's use Char Technologies on an announcement of that thousand ton bio core order as an example. Hi, I've just announced we're taking the equivalent of five hundred and eighty cars off the road for a year by cutting carbon emissions in the steel industry. Are your viewers interested in climate change stories? Notice, I didn't call this a clean tech story. I called it a climate change story. Within our own companies, we often get caught up in the language and acronyms of our business. If your mother wouldn't use your lingo, you shouldn't use it to pitch a media property your story. Part of doing the media's job for them is, you know, part of the media's job is cutting through the noise. And when I was senior anchor at BNN, I had a standing policy with tech companies that always threw them off. I'd say, I'll have you on to talk about your gadget, your breakthrough, your service on one condition. You don't call it a solution. Nobody talks about creative solutions on a go-forward basis. It's just not part of our day-to-day language. Also, doing the job of the media producer also means providing them with supporting content. That's called B-roll, a fact sheet. It's not a press release. And a biography of the principal, for those who don't know what B-roll is, we should probably go back to that. It's video that supports what you're talking about. The A-roll would be you. The term role originates from the days of physical film and later videotapes, where spinning was actually something that happened. And now if you're talking about a cat, you want to show a cat. That's B-roll. Media always wants to match the pictures with the words, but no longer has the time to hunt down a video of a cat. So you make that your job. Offer your own B-roll about your company. No texts on the screen, nothing that looks promotional, only factual. If it doesn't look like you did their job for them, they'll probably actually use it. Now, before you land the interview, you have to be available on a moment's notice. The number of times I, I took a press release, picked up the phone, made a call, and the CEO wasn't available for days. Segments get dropped all the time at the last minute. So never put out a press release or pitch a newsroom without making your principal available that same day. Something happening next week? Talk to them next week. Being available at a moment's notice requires you also to be prepared to deliver your story. You've got to know it inside and out. You need to reduce it to two words. And then you build it back up from there into a full sentence. If you can't tell your story in a single jargon-free sentence, well, you simply don't know your story well enough. Now, once you've landed yourself in front of a camera, you have to be energetic. You have to be enthusiastic about your story. If you don't seem interested, no one else is going to be interested. When I do media training, for example, I cite Spinal Tap as the example. You do want to be you, but you want to take that personality knob and turn it from ten to eleven. You know, just one more notch, not three. You don't have to be over the top because people will pick up on that, just a slightly larger-than-life version of yourself. It's said that the camera adds ten pounds, but it also takes away subtlety. A smile will look like a smirk. A smirk will look like pursed lips, and pursed lips looks angry. So always slightly overreact. COVID has revealed as well the value of the webcam. And I want to show you an example of what we're talking about here specifically. Because post-pandemic, we are expecting remote interviews to be something that continues for some time. And it's going to continue over consumer-grade technology. But just because it's consumer-grade doesn't mean that it has to look like it's consumer-grade. I'll give you an example here. You know, we've got this guy here with a 4K webcam. The thing is, is what you want is the background and the foreground lighting. That matters as well. There's been effort that's put into this. You can see that this person has at eye level, they place their laptop or their camera on a stack of books. You want to make sure that the people focus on you, not what's on the shelf behind you. Just because everyone else's camera shot looks like crap, doesn't mean that yours should as well. So a well-prepared guest who comes with their own material and looks like a million dollars on camera will quickly become a repeat guest, especially if they're willing to talk about more than just their own company. Express your thought leadership on the state of your industry, where it's going. These are invaluable to media properties as big talking heads. Now, in modern-day public relations, mainstream media is referred to as earned media. But after speaking with one of the largest PR firms in Canada, I've learned an interesting truth. For every dollar that's been invested in getting the attention of mainstream media, public relations firms are spending as many as $10 on paid media, creating content, targeting the demographic through social media. That's where I'm working today with brands like Nokia, Microsoft, CIBC and others. But that's a, it's a whole other separate keynote. The question becomes, what's next? Industry four point O. Clean tech will join every other industry in a major shift that's been taking place over the last five to six years. The world is shifting to industry four point O. The fourth industrial revolution is underway. We all learned about the first industrial revolution in high school, the mechanization of factories in the seventeen hundreds. But we weren't really taught about the two others that took place. After the first migration from farms to city factories, in the eighteen hundreds, we saw a proliferation of the steam engine shrinking distances, expanding commerce into new markets faster than ever before. Speed also played a factor in the third industrial revolution, peaking in the eighties with the introduction of the personal computer, brought on by the invention of the integrated circuit about thirty years earlier. But today, we're at the dawn of the fourth industrial revolution. It will be fueled by three key technologies. Billions of sensors known as the Internet of Things, 5G wireless to connect these devices, artificial intelligence to make sense of it all and drive business decisions. So I want to start with 5G wireless. This will become the infrastructure of the future, much like how the internet has become as ubiquitous as the electricity flowing through our walls. 5G offers three key advantages over 4G: speed, latency and connectivity. The high-definition movie downloaded to your current smartphone will take about four and a half minutes. Interesting thing is, is that four and a half minutes currently downloading that same HD video under 5G will be reduced to as little as one point two seconds. This will enable a remarkable number of new things that we don't even really know were coming yet. Not just, you know, for Netflix, for example. Ultra-low latency, the length of time it takes Hello World to go from point A to point B will be reduced from hundreds of milliseconds to as little as one. And unlike today's 4G towers, which are limited to hundreds of simultaneous connections, 5G will enable hundreds of thousands of simultaneous connections. That will be important for the Internet of Things. 5G's power requirements are so low that a smart sensor that tracks, say, occupancy, humidity, traffic control, or the forehead temperature of an employee as they walk through the front door of your office will have the batteries outlive the sensors themselves. Industrial facilities are evolving dramatically because of that sensor technology. Where we previously would place, you know, receive data on a weekly basis, maybe a daily basis, best case scenario, on a piece of equipment, we'll get real-time data on its performance. The problem is, is that is an insane amount of data. But big data is what artificial intelligence is all about. Machine learning systems will be built, that are being built today, will monitor your factory's equipment to predict failures before they happen. Cost savings and downtime through preventative maintenance is just the beginning of the promise of industry four point O. Cameras tied to artificial intelligence systems will know if an employee is reaching out to grab a widget on an assembly line and not wearing the protective gloves. And if they're not, it'll shut down that assembly line in milliseconds. Now, once we've got sensors on everything, we can create what artificial intelligence scientists call digital twins. Basically, a virtual version of a factory office building or high-traffic intersection and run millions of what-if simulations to help squeeze more productivity out of that plant, reduce the carbon footprint of a tower's HVAC system, or change the traffic lights to better accommodate for congestion, not just at an intersection, but for the entire city. Perfect example, if you own a smart thermostat, you are already a member of the fourth industrial revolution. And every time you adjust the temperature, you're contributing to the reduction of greenhouse gases by teaching that thermostat how to be more efficient. So combining 5G wireless, the Internet of Things and artificial intelligence in clean tech, we'll be able to reduce our carbon footprint both personally as well as professionally. I'm Michael Hainsworth. Thank you very much for your time today.
Michael, thanks very much. I, I will tell you, from my perspective, you definitely have your enthusiasm turned up to eleven. And, and it's, and it looks like you've got room even for more, but you're at eleven already. You might be able to get to twelve. But that was, that was terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I know we said we, we go till eleven fifteen. If there's questions for Michael, maybe we can do five or 10 minutes of questions, Michael, if.
Yeah, hook me up.
So I'll ask the first question and hopefully we'll get a couple in the chat. Media is changing. Do you see the mainstream media going through a major change in terms of, you know, will, will one of our major newspapers close? Will the TV networks close? Will all of our news becoming a different way? What do you, like, I still get a newspaper, but I think I'm an exception. Can you talk about that specifically?
There are expectations that we are going to see an amalgamation within the media world. I had a really interesting conversation with a Bay Street heavyweight, someone with incredibly deep pockets. And he was telling me that he had not one, but all three of the major media properties in his office one day. And they're all talking about, you know, how are we going to make this work? His argument was, two of you need to sell to the third. And we'll figure out the regulator after that. We'll deal with all those types of, of issues about concentration of ownership. But nobody wants to be in media right now. All the major media properties bought newspapers, bought television stations, bought radio stations because they thought they could use them as a megaphone to sell more cell phones. And then when the news media pushed back on that idea and the, the morning show hosts with their glittering teeth and their perfect hair were apprehensive about doing that kind of thing, the industry sort of stepped back and went, well, what the hell are we doing owning these organizations? They're incredibly expensive. They're a lot of work. You know, I, I can only imagine that Bell, which is only, you know, Bell Media is only 10% of Bell's revenue stream. But I guarantee you, it's ninety-nine percent of its headaches. There is going to be amalgamation. There will be a shrinking of this industry. But at the same time, there's also going to be a new also going to be a new development, which has kind of been going on for the past five to 10 years, ever since the iPhone came out in 2007 with a camera, and then it became 3G and ultimately 4G, and we could stream things live. Citizen journalism has become a thing. It's not a very good thing on the whole, a lot of lack of professionalism and all that kind of stuff. But there is a second sort of fourth estate that's been developing, 4.1, where we as people have the ability to make change in society, make change within corporations, at a level that a 35 second news story at the start of the six o'clock news can't do anymore.
So I think a great question. You talked about clean tech a little bit at the beginning of your presentation. Talk, but can you name, the question is, can you name other companies in the clean tech space? I know from our discussions earlier, you've interviewed 16,000 people. Can you name any off the top of your head, other companies that you'd be interested in following?
Not at this time, in part because I've got financial relationships that I prefer not to disclose by way of talking about it. At BNN, for example, we had a policy where you couldn't report on the companies that you owned. And while I don't know if that's a policy that still exists, I always was firm about that and believed that if I owned a particular company, I can't be on TV talking about it. And so I sort of feel that that's kind of the same sort of thing here. Sorry.
No, 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 that's fair. That's fair. That's a fair answer.
I love Char.
It's all good. So the next question is, can you talk about where you see the world going in terms of environmental awareness? And that's the question. I can add color to that question if you like. I mean, we had blue boxes in the 1980s. I don't think they're going anywhere. Can you talk about your perspective on the environment?
Absolutely.
And where you think, you know, sort of mainstream perspective on, we used to call it the environment industry. Now we call it clean tech. But anyway, can you talk about that?
Absolutely. You mentioned the Blue Box program, and it seems like it's always been there. It hasn't always been there, and we know that. And there was a time when you talked about the environmentalism as some sort of dirty hippie thing. And actually, this is really relevant, the hippie reference, because when we saw the rise in the 1960s and into the 70s of the hippie movement, the free love was one aspect of it, sure. But another aspect of it was about the planet, you know, saving Mother Earth. There's one big reason why the hippies didn't save the planet. And that's because they didn't have what we have today, a global infrastructure for communication, organization, and activism. And so while the hippies had all these big plans, they traded their peace symbols for BMW logos, because they just couldn't break through. There was too little power concentrated in California and in other places, you know, Yorkville in Toronto and all that kind of stuff. But today, what we see with the internet and social media explicitly, the double edged sword that it is, one way that it does cut positively is that organizational skill and that ability to constantly reaffirm to those who may be on the fence or not a believer in clean tech and the technologies therein, that we're going to boil that frog. Slowly over time, people are going to look around and realize that everything that came after the Blue Box program always just seemed to be there. So social media is going to play a very big role in increasing not only the acceptance of these types of issues, but activism of it and participation. My daughter is 14, going on 24 right now, and heaven help me if I don't properly sort the recycling. She is pre-work, but she and her cohort will soon be in control of this planet. And they have a very different perspective. They have a very similar perspective to the hippies. But what they've got now is a global infrastructure system where you can use glowing rectangles like these to organize and actually invoke change.
It's a great answer. It's 1115, but there's one more question. So I'm going to ask it. Correct. So the question starts, are you familiar with Trojan and Xenon? So those are, if you don't know, those are two Canadian clean tech companies, very successful water companies, both that were sold to US companies. Do you think that they give a forecast of what happens for companies in general as they were bought by American corporations? Can you talk about the sort of, you know, Canadian business? You've been doing this a long time. You've interviewed lots of people in Canada, but also from other countries. Do you think Canadian companies, not that they're at risk, but do we have a risk as Canadians that we end up, successful companies end up being sold to US operations?
That is an absolute concern of mine, as well as Industry Canada and others. And attempts have been made to try to reduce that brain drain. Canadians have an innate ability to create startups and to grow those companies into growth oriented companies. And once you move from that startup stage to growth stage, that's when you do get a lot of that attention from around the world. The problem that Canada has, Canadian entrepreneurs, is that we don't scale very well. We haven't been able to figure that out, really. My most favorite example of inability to scale, believe it or not, is BlackBerry. BlackBerry, sure, it was a global company, but internally, it never really scaled itself. And so they were stepping over themselves left, right, and center throughout that entire period. And the first mover advantage of being credited with inventing the smartphone, even though they actually didn't, that first mover advantage failed to be a long term advantage, because they were unable to scale up. To do so, you have to address one particular issue, which is the founder's dilemma. And often, we find ourselves in situations where companies end up getting bought by American companies or multinational global companies, because the guy who invented it, the woman who was the brains on day one, they didn't step aside in time and turn it over to the MBA who is capable of scaling that company. If Canadian companies can scale globally effectively, they can retain that independence to a certain degree. But the reality is, is that that only goes so far. You know, we are the mouse living next to the elephant, and that elephant's got a much deeper pocket than we do.
Great answer. Michael, it's my pleasure to thank you. We really appreciate you spending the time with us and your insightful commentary, et cetera. And we hope to have a long, beneficial, mutual relationship and keep in touch with you in the future. Thanks again.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Andrew, if you want to turn your camera back on, I believe that's our full agenda. I'd like to thank everyone for attending. We look forward, hopefully, next year to doing this meeting in person. And if there's no other further news, we will terminate the meeting.
That's it. Thanks, everyone, for your attendance. And as James mentioned, hope to see you in person next time around.
And just a closing comment, if you're still happy, a happy Char shareholder, tell two friends. We'd love to spread the word. So we've increased our shareholder base. We want to continue to do that. So tell a friend or tell two friends, and Andrew and I'd be happy to be in touch with anyone that wants to learn more. Thanks again. All the best, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Andrew, we have our board meeting.